All reading order. All right, to the point of the week. Bled allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The call of order for the Republican hearing with respect to our ordinances of numbers four and five that are being introduced in our regular meeting a little later this evening. And I guess we need a roll call first. Motion to approve the agenda of the Republican hearing June 10, 2015. Motion is supported by Chapman and Clark. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We have two ordinances on the docket for our regular meeting. One ordinance rewords the existing ordinance to allow chickens. And I should say that eliminates chickens in the regular ordinance. And then ordinance number five allows chickens within the village. This is time for public comment. If anyone has any comments, please feel free. Yes, Judy.
Judy Zglowski, eighty-two twenty-one West State Street. I would ask this board not to amend the ordinance to allow chickens. Thank you.
Is there any other further comment? Since there's no further comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion support.
Motion is supported. Zell, Jack, and Clark. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Public meeting is adjourned. Call the meeting order. For the regular meeting schedule this evening, Village House of Central Lake, June tenth, two thousand and fifteen. Since we've all risen and bled allegiance once tonight, we'll propose this session. A roll call, please.
Chapman.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
There.
Here.
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 Good. We have wanted corrections to the agenda that we have on their action items. Letter H, approve or deny residence request or work defense. That has been scratched. Per the request of the requested party. Beyond that, I think the agenda is in good shape. Need motion to approve the agenda?
Need motion to approve the agenda?
Support?
Full support.
Motion supported. Here. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Remove the minutes of the May thirteenth reading, two thousand and fifteen. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve the minutes of the last regularly scheduled meeting Wednesday, May thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Make that motion.
Motion supported to accept the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Public comment? No public comment. So we'll head on your reports. Police report, Rod, Nick, and Scott.
Yes, sir. Well, you probably read it, but we had a total of forty-six complaints entered in the month of May. That's the time was spent on patrol, especially schools, owned in May. Chief attended the planning commission, DDA meetings, zoning meetings. I assisted with the annual post-prom event. He's finishing, he finished detailing the combatory, of course, just up for bid. He attended the police officer Memorial on Gaylord and attended the LVA conference in Petoskey. Made a safety presentation in the Central Lake preschool program. Also assisted Michigan State Police with their dog-dogs on that through the school. Pardon my appearance here a couple of weeks ago. Five additional zoning complaints or zoning issues were sent out in May. And as of right now, since I started this, I've sent out about a hundred and fifty. And right now, I think only two that hasn't complied. Everybody's been very nice about it. I've talked to a lot of people and it seems to be going pretty good.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. DPW.
Everybody should have a copy of DPW. Got a whole lot out of the ordinary. Then I wanted to touch on number three. About two, four, five, six months ago, I come to you guys and ask you about the log in a while. We're gonna have to prove it while it got cemented in last week. So the northern will supply the Village of Central Lake, the DEQ and the health department with the abandonment well log. I got that well. Number fourteen, the new line locator, we got it. We love it and so far this week, two days straight, we have been using it. That's how many missed digs we have coming in right now. There seems to be a ton of digging going on in the Village of Central Lake. Any questions?
You're doing a good job, Sam. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, Sam. Lyle, get some.
Memorial Day, we had twenty-two registered camper. We've had an average of twenty-four per weekend since then. Other than that, usual chores, mowing, cleaning fire pits, taking care of bathrooms. We had a problem with the Wi-Fi on Memorial Weekend. Our capacity isn't great enough. There was times when I couldn't take and use the reservation program on there because I couldn't get on. We had problems again last, the weekend before last. And that was because the notes were done. I'd rather not have to contend with that every weekend or every holiday. These people are coming on the sites and it's not unusual for taking him. Mom and dad have a laptop and the kids have their tablets and so forth. And we do not have the capacity to handle it. What we do, I don't know. Rachel brought Sam's unit down for me to use the other day and that worked fine, so. That's something that we've developed. We've developed that Wi-Fi and those people are looking at it now. So I guess we gotta either choice of breaking me off in it and giving the capacity to the people that are using the campground or we've gotta boost the capacity of the Wi-Fi. People want. Other than that, I put new rails on that other foot bridge today. Took the lattice work up and I put the rails on there. And I couldn't keep the lattice intact. It kept breaking. That plastic lattice is not the answer. And so we put rails up on that foot bridge just like we had on the north. So that's taken care of. Other than that, it's all where we're sharing.
Any questions?
Do we have an estimate on the cost for boosting the Wi-Fi?
Yes, I got it. Lyle and I talked, we've already talked to him earlier.
It's just gonna be taken care of, you know?
Can you bring that up when I get my report?
Anybody have anything else? Thanks, Lyle. Correspondents? Commission on Aging is requesting any and all who would like to volunteer for their senior luncheon that they have had for the last thirty-eight years. It is August fifth. If anybody is interested in volunteering to help out, we're more than welcome to accept your offer. And that's all correspondence to the hand of local government elsewhere. Meeting reports. Rod speaks sidewalk, you like?
Let's start with sidewalks. Sam went through and put all the markers down for the new sidewalk that's gonna be on Howard on the west side from the school south. Lila looked at it. Melissa looked at it. Myself looked at it. And we feel that that should be our first priority as a safety issue as the elementary kids leave school and parents are picking them up. And I just wanna make sure we're all on board when we do that because of safety and not replace the sidewalk before we get the safety issue taken care of first. So I just, when Sam goes ahead with that, I think, I don't know if it's a, do we vote on this? Or it's already been approved in the budget for sidewalks?
I think we need to vote on it.
Okay. So that's good there.
I'm sure we all support it.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Yeah, okay, I just. I didn't wanna supersede by authority. Rod's water is gonna take care of my sidewalk at the corner of Old State Road and Howard. Your water broke my sidewalk. Thank you. Ruston Road, five hundred feet north from the Corner Store. Reethen Riley's can give us a bid for overlay. So that one should be coming in soon. We're calling it the Brewers intersection, Ballard and Howard, the raised intersection there. Again, we've got Reethen Riley looking at that to scale down the raised intersection. So that way, the intersection doesn't have a raise in it. So that way, the water goes cleanly all the way to eighty-eight and doesn't pour on the other sides of the street there on Ballard. Herrick Street, we're gonna get a bid out on that. And again, keep beating the same drum. With the park thing, do we hold off? Do we not hold off? Do we look like fools if we pave? And all of a sudden, we have heavy machinery coming down there. So we're gonna get a bid, look at it, and we can go from there. All the water breaks, hopefully by July fourth, contractors are gonna come in and put all the patches down where there's currently gravel. On one example, Maple Street by, Maple Street and Classic Pizza, I believe there's one there, you know, eight by ten section. We're gonna have that hopefully cleaned up by July fourth. So that's streets, sidewalks, nothing new on lights.
Very good. Thanks. Rod, sure, Lawrence?
I really don't have a lot. Sam doesn't already have any DPW. He has turned out a lot of water. There's a lot of water turn on request. And I touched base with Sam, I don't know, Lindsey or whoever, there's really nothing going on. It's been pretty good, so. Plus, they cut out a loop for a while, cleared it out six. I haven't seen that.
Lot of enforcement, Bill?
Continued to work on the USDA grant. Additional paperwork was sent in. Submitted road closure with Rachel's help there. And the new car is in. It's over the shop, good lights and siren and that kind of stuff put in it. Nice looking car. It's in keeping with the times. It's a little bit crappy, but it's nice.
When will it be back? Here it is.
Yeah, you seen the new ambulances?
Yeah.
Township Ambulance Authority? It's the same thing every, seems to be the thing all of us.
When will it be back? When will it be ready and delivered back to us?
I would say probably a week.
We're hoping the twenty-first is what Dave said.
Yeah. It wants it in for the twenty-first, but yeah. Should be ready the twenty-first. And that's all we got.
We did not receive any bids on the old car?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Any other communication?
My report is very short compared to previous ones. I just need to let everyone know the campground brochure has had a couple edits and it's gone off to the thread. I have been attending the planning commission training out at Torch Lake. We have two of those left, thank God. But one of the takeaways from last week's meeting, all of these teachers are like Michigan State PhDs and professionals at this stuff. And he stressed to us very emphatically that we need to have advocates supporting the master plan, like to keep looking at it, making sure the things that we put in it are being followed and whatnot. So I thought maybe we would honor that and bring that to the planning commission. Other planning commission stuff, we'll see a little bit further ahead. But the only other thing I had here was welcome back to Rod. A little bit less of you. But it's good to hear it back. I had a question for Rachel about the email status, but that can wait till a little bit later. But that's all we got.
I got a quick question. What are we supposed to add to the master plan? Did he say a specific, like, should we be moved, like?
He, no, this training is really detailed and intentional. I mean, it's, he hasn't given a specific, like, you know, we need to do this, that, or that. His message of last week was really just keep looking at it. Make sure that what we said we were gonna do is getting done.
All right.
The book is like this, I can, it's just like brain overload, so, I mean.
So then every time we add something, we had to say revise twenty fifteen then? Or did we put it back out?
I don't know what the exact procedure would be. You know, the planning commission would look it all over and say, you know, we need to do this or do that or update it. That I don't know. So, but one of the things that, within this course is after I finish all of the classes, I'm to give you a presentation on it so that I can get the master certification or everything. So at that point, you know, if you have questions, I might be able to help.
The only reason I'm asking is 'cause Janet Coke was here. And she just kinda like walked us right through it. You're gonna do this, this, and this, and this. And I don't know. Now that she's gone, I don't know.
Well, I'm pretty sure that the planning commission, you know, needs to look it over and see. It's such a very new group and some of the people haven't been into the planning commission portion of it as much as the DDA. So I would think that it would start there, just everybody there reviewing it. And then if there's changes, to bring it forth here and proceed.
I think the state likes to have you revise it every five years.
Yeah.
Okay, then you have to set out a new addition every five. It has to be revised every eight.
Another two years maybe, I think, right?
Yeah.
About two.
And to keep a separate ledger file on what has been completed?
Yeah, I think so.
Did that revisionist meet up with the?
He just, he just used the phrase master plan. He didn't make it specific as proportions of it. But he was like, take this back to your people.
Thanks for bringing that up. Might answer personnel, Joe's not here tonight? Would you like to say anything, Rachel? Part's a public comment for you, Lila?
Okay. We've had a bit of a problem with our reservations, but I think we're gonna get it air dropped this year. It takes a little time. It takes time. There's no getting around it. We had some people wanting to reserve two years in advance. And I think that's too far. What we have talked about, the committee, we were considering going back to what the state does. And the state has reservations after the first of the year so that everybody has an equal chance. And I think we're gonna have to discuss this on the board here as to how you wanna do this. Because there's just the three of us and we've been working over this for a long time. And we've had problems, no matter which way you go. So we've gotta have the whole board set behind us and say, this is the way it should be done. Lyle has done a wonderful job on the bridges and stuff. We still have that ditch that we got to, have you heard anything on that yet? Melissa? Could you turn that up to Sam?
Does he do current?
Is it?
The last time I said we spoke on this, Sam gave, or said there was someone in Gaylord that would be able to help on this, but it'd be like a fifteen-page application. And at that point, we weren't sure who was to do the application or what was to be done. So it sort of paused at that point. So here we are to talk about it. Who does it? When do we do it?
Well, Melissa and I were talking about it to bring everybody up to speed. It's the stream that runs through the south end of the park and by the boat launch. To touch any part of that watershed, you need a lot of paperwork. Melissa and I discussed it and we felt, once the grant goes through, we could fold that into one grant. So that way, we're not paying for a site fee from DEQ, an impact statement and all these things. We can wrap it up into one program. So that way, we're not paying two sets of permits. And that would all fall under the guys at the grant. And then we'd have professionals from Gordy Frazier doing all that. That's just my thought. Instead of duplicating something now, then come back in October and the same folks come out and then they're gonna look at you and say, why didn't we just do it in October? That's, that's my thought.
Well, I think that's a good idea because are we losing just one site? Would that not be unfair?
Right, right now, site nine is gonna have to be worked very closely because a trailer on there, three foot long, is gonna impact that bank. That's what was that, we lost about four foot of that brick right out on site nine. And besides that, the mushrooms have got back into that bank. I have filled it, the holes in there and so forth. But we start using that with the trailers and so forth and it'll probably impact that more.
Could we just, just for a chance or something like that?
We've already got it booked for this year.
Is it booked already?
It is booked already. That's a, that's a.
Yeah, it is, but that's a trouble.
Everything is booked for starting a week from now. Everything is booked pretty heavy all through July.
Well, that's gonna be an awful lot.
The only thing I can do with that at this time is take a set of those people that bring their equipment in there and be sure that park closer to the road and not get them back too quick. But that bank is soft.
How about two by twelves? So that way, they could ride the tires onto the, just for protection, same, keep it tight to the road, put two by twelves in so tires won't.
I have got some stuff down there.
Just to spread the weight out.
Gary, Gary has cut me some stuff. And I've got it up behind the cleaning station. And I will be using some of that stuff. And that's gonna help, but it is, it is a, it's a bad situation.
It's a bad, well, just have to use caution.
But keep in mind, at this point, the bank is where it's at. When the DEQ goes in and looks at it, you're not gonna put stone four foot out. You'll be able to put it at the washout, all you'll be able to do. So that lot is always gonna have that curve, isn't it? You can't go back in and say, fifty years ago, the screen was only six inches wide and we're gonna narrow it down. It's what it is now at this point. It's multi-nature reclaiming itself.
All we can do is reshape, uh, stabilize it, that's all we can do, done.
Well, okay.
We're not gonna reclaim that, better.
All right, and Larry, oh, Rob?
Oh, like Lyle was saying on the Wi-Fi there.
Right, I'll let you do that.
All right. Like he was saying, three years ago, when we started the Wi-Fi program down here, who would have envisioned, you know, a family of four, two kids each having a, you know, iPads, cell phones, and both parents? I mean, it's potentially have six electronic devices down there sucking off the Wi-Fi. So Lyle and I were talking, so then I went back to Rachel and she ran some numbers for me. Two options we could go, upgrade the whole park for two hundred and seventy dollars a month versus our one fifteen a month. Obviously, it's a hundred and seventeen dollars more per month for the three months. Or we get Lyle's own data box for thirty-eight dollars a month, times three months, for a total of one fourteen. Then at three months, they take that data box back out and we don't get billed for it the rest of the year. And it seems like a quick and easy solve for this whole problem. And again, the campground, it's growing and we've got great numbers. And these are just some of the, you know, growing pains Lyle and I were talking about. And it's a good thing that people are making use of it, you know? I don't know if it has to be an action item or since it was just a campground committee thing, so.
All right, for thirty-eight bucks a month, I wouldn't think that we would have to post public until the next meeting.
Okay.
We could just make a motion and do it?
Sure.
Make a motion to do it.
All right.
Thirty-eight bucks a month for that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yep.
What happens over the Fourth of July when you get forty campers in there? So does that mean at one time, only Lyle's having the problem, not now, over Labor Day, Memorial Day?
Lyle's gonna have his own bike, or Rachel's gonna.
But what I'm saying is what happens when you fill the whole park up? And now you've got more people trying to use the Wi-Fi, so only a certain percentage of them is gonna be able to use it at one time? The rest of your campers can't get on because he can't get on?
Well, again, it's gonna be slower, definitely. But for now, I'd like to see if this solves the problem.
It would solve his problem.
Yeah.
But now over the Fourth of July, when that parks full, it's not gonna solve the other twenty more campers that have come in with, I'm just picking a figure, twenty-five more Wi-Fi connections.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Now they can't utilize that Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Because it's not, it doesn't have enough power. So why wouldn't you, for three months out of the year, just boost the power up?
Because then that would, that would be.
I realize there's costs.
Costs to it.
Yes, I understand that.
So.
But I'm thinking of the other twenty-five people that have the Wi-Fi, they wanna get hooked up to the connection.
Yeah.
I think he oughta have his own connection anyways. But I agree with you, if, if it's gonna be a problem, which I'm sure it's gonna be.
Oh, like I just stated, this is a growing park and the Wi-Fi is new. I'd like to go this route first, and if there are complaints over the Fourth, we can address the issue later.
You should have been polite, didn't you?
That's why some calls, I'm pretty deep.
I got you.
I gotta agree with Rob because if that, we're not gonna know what, who's getting, what's getting, where.
Where, how, where.
Who's using what, where it's going, so I just agree with that.
The only way we're gonna know anything about the Wi-Fi is complete the company.
I got a question, I don't have the speed on it, but I know that used to be basically public. Is your password even hard enough?
No.
Because I used to be a bit across the lake. If you get through.
That, that.
How many people are stealing and following down our.
Well, besides myself and you.
But I mean, if.
That adds into it.
We make a private.
They come up here and you can, you can close it off.
Everybody within a hundred yards of that place is probably using that Wi-Fi for free.
Probably come and clear up down there.
I could stand in the man's yard across the lake and I could get it through the bell, so I know if they're getting it that far.
I do it at the garage, if I want it.
I get it, it's right out.
I just wonder if we should make it private, like get a password.
That can be. I don't have a problem with it.
It was for the campground.
The situation is, I'm talking about myself right now, not being able to, you know, over Memorial Weekend, there was some money that didn't get put in there until on Monday or Tuesday when things are freed up. Because I wasn't gonna leave a credit card, hang out there and wait for the transaction to come back and maybe not get that transaction back.
I'm just looking at this, a hundred and fifty-five extra a month, give us, you know.
One seventeen.
Did you have, I got one thing that I don't remember.
One seventeen plus his thirty-five, a hundred and fifty. Plus his.
It would increase our bill a hundred and seventeen more dollars, right?
Did you have the right figures on that? That was told as only ninety dollars a month extra. That was told as only $90 a month extra, and with a total of $270 for three months.
$270 a month versus one... We're paying currently $115 a month.
It would go from $115 a month to $270 a month.
$270? I thought you said there were $200 a month.
$115 to $270, so that's $160 something dollars a month, right?
It's $150.
How much would that add to the capacity?
We didn't have a problem last year, and it was at the same speed.
We don't know.
Well, what's the capacity now?
I mean, we didn't have a problem last year, and it was at the same speed.
We did have a problem last year.
Give us a...
We did have a problem last year.
We don't know how much we're adding to it. I don't know how we can assess whether that's too much money or not. You know, if we're not helping it, or if we're using... You know, we need to know before we buy it.
But working last year, the only issue is Lyle this year, then I think $38 is legit for three months.
He's handling credit cards.
I think if we revisit this after the season and figure out what happened with the data.
We don't have to decide today.
I had problems last year, too. And Joe told me that they raised the capacity on it last year. Then I find out this year, no, it wasn't.
Can they tell how many people are using it?
Since last year.
I can pull a report daily that says how many.
How many people use it. That would give us an idea whether the campground's using it or other people are breaking in on it.
Either way, Lyle still has his own.
Yeah, you're serving him.
We made that, I made the motion and we're out of support, right?
Hold on just a second here, maybe we oughta discuss a little bit in the, just in the interim, before we buy the extra. Let's do a password, and then give it to the campers, and that'll stop some of the connections. Then let's do Lyle's, and see what happens over the Fourth. You gotta give us time to find out how much we're paying for and how much we're using.
I think Lyle having dedicated and consistent power is a...
Well, you've gotta vote on the board right now.
Yeah, it's on the table.
So we gotta vote on that.
You have a motion for just to do the $38, so Lyle can get his own power.
That's a motion.
It's got, well, it's supported by...
Move and support it. Clark, go there. No, don't make a... Everybody understand it? All those in favor?
Those?
Not approved, probably don't approve.
On this other stuff for the parcel, we'll have to put that down in action items?
We can look into it in another month. I think if we give Lyle dedicated, we'll get somebody. And then we'll take it from there. I know the internet connection over the Fourth of July in the whole area is tapped a big time. My phone does not work as good as it does the rest of the year. So there's a lot of people up there tapping into what the towers and everything is providing. We just may not be able to service it either, so... But let's get Lyle taken care of, which he does. We'll move on. Are there probably anything else, Melissa?
No, that would be it then.
My report. The Rustons have signed the consent judgment. It's been given to the judge. We're waiting for the judge's signature. When we get that back, then there'll be a default judgment and a request for a hearing for the attorney to meet with the judge. I don't have a timeframe. I don't have the document back that the judge has signed. I have the document that says that the Rustons have signed. And the judge is just, more than likely, they say, will sign it, and then they can proceed with the last step. Another month? I don't know. They can't nail anybody down to tell me, so... So we just have to wait. Now, if that impacts what we wanna do, roadwork and stuff of that sort this year, I don't know what the consequences of that, if that's what we stand with. I can look at Tarek Street more critically.
Shame we had to put money into that street there, it'll tear it up. Gee, that's so cheap.
It's getting there, but not much I can do, so... So this judge?
Yes.
Not in Antrim County, then?
Yes.
He is in Antrim?
Yes.
He just can't put ours on top of the pile one morning?
He should have been a politician, I'm telling you.
I'm looking behind on the attorney to tell us what to do, so...
Does this reference Thurston Park property?
The north end of the property. There was no clear title, so we've applied for a quiet toggle action, and this is a process we've had to go through. There was ads put in the papers, anybody have any interest in that property? There was Mr. and Mrs. Ruston downstate that responded to that and said yes, but were willing to sign up. So there was one other party, but it was deemed that they really didn't have an interest. So...
So the property's being given to the village, is that correct?
The property, we're trying to gain the title to it, so it will be the village property, yes. We had the neighbor across the road that thought that he had an interest, but he didn't have an interest. And when all of this is said and done, it'll be ours, and we can proceed with the grant. So from my understanding, that's the whole of it, but...
Yeah. The grant will fill the boardwalk?
The grant will do all the work that's been proposed in the past, yes.
When, about two years ago?
Yeah, some oak slips and...
Walkway. I hope we get the grid.
In any way, Sam, thanks for putting another option in, temporary. Okay, the rest of my report. I need to talk with Sam a little bit more about it. We have a request from a resident to pay a landscaping bill, because when we did work two and a half years ago, we promised that it would be back in its original condition. And there's been issues along the way, but supposedly, they have gotten it fixed and want it to be reimbursed, because we said we would put it back in the original condition. So that's on my plate right now. I haven't really discussed it with Sam or anything else, so... We will have a planning commission seat available, assuming we accept the resignation that's in the action items. The Act 51 Street Financial Report has been submitted to MDOT. It required Rachel and Sam's signature on the cover to it, and everything else was submitted by the auditors via electronic, so... We've got a new business topic, which I will discuss further as we move forward. That's all I have, unless somebody has some questions. We have bills to approve. Prepaid payroll payable, total of $42,526.42. A motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve the bills.
Motion to approve the bills, supported by...
Support it.
There. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
There.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. New business. Congregational Church has requested that we abandon the alley between their church and the parson's next door. There is an alley there that's on the original plan. And I'm gonna turn this information down to Rob. Such as the streets and sidewalks and things of that sort. And all of that information is in there that they're... So... I don't think there's anything that Sam would have to corroborate, that there's no water lines or anything for that alley that's designated there, so... And they pretty well surround it all with the north half of the lot, up in the northeast corner of that lot. Action items. Everybody received the Freedom of Information Act procedures and guidelines. We need to pass this as a policy, and we will be in accordance with the changes that are being dictated by the state.
Okay, motion to approve that? The doctor, excuse me?
Okay, Zon Act. Motion, lack of support, to accept the Village of Central Lake written public summary of FOI procedures and guidelines. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Ordinance is number four. This ordinance four amends Chapter Eight of Section 8.2 I. It eliminates the chickens in this ordinance. Anybody have any questions?
There are some chickens already in the village, I think.
Yes, sir, yeah.
So what can you do if they didn't, if you deny it, what's gonna happen?
What we're doing with Chapter Four is just amending, or ordinance four, we're just amending the language of that ordinance, which eliminates chickens. It doesn't say whether they can have chickens, chickens, or not have chickens. It just eliminates them as being an animal that doesn't exist in the village yet, until we go to ordinance number five.
But what if we go to approve number five, then we just totally kill the chickens?
All right, would you prefer to proceed with ordinance number five first, and then amend four?
Well, I do have several questions on number five.
All right. I think we're allowed to shift gears here. Number four. All right. So we're still prohibiting geese and ducks?
Yes.
Correct?
Right.
All right. And the usual pigs, sheep, goats, mules, cows, and horses?
Yes.
All right. Just not chickens?
Just not chickens.
All right.
Because we're assuming that number five is a go. If five is dead, then we just, if we approve one, there's no chickens.
So we go to five instead of four, or...
All right, let's open up number five. For the record, public hearings are not required for nuisance ordinances, even though we did have one.
That was a courtesy.
All right, anybody have any discussion with this ordinance five?
I do. I have marked up my previous ordinance a lot. I guess the first thing I ask myself is, why does the chicken ordinance have the village clerk, one, imposing conditions, two, making inspections, and three, issuing infractions, instead of our law enforcement?
On page 25.8 of the last page, it says, "The village clerk and police officers of the Village of Central Lake are hereby designated as the authorized officials to issue municipal civil infractions, direct alleged violators of this ordinance, according to..." Should it be ordinance officer? We're on page five, right? Our police officers are the enforcement. Page five. Point eight, page four. Page four. Page four, it's like that, yeah. It's not just the village clerk. And this is...
But my question is, why is the village clerk in there at all? It should just, in my opinion, be the law enforcement people.
Can I say something? I was told to put together ordinance off of the Village of Bel Air and Algraffs's ordinances, and their clerk is in there.
Well, we're limited here. Well, that's fine, but I don't see that situation. No, no, I get that. That's fine. No, that's great. I understand we replicated other information, but I just don't see that working for us. I think that we can just be okay with Scott or Bob or whomever doing these things.
Police officers.
Right.
Gee, just that one thing, police officers.
Well, to just go through and...
Just start at page one there, you can start the end. She should be up to speed. So, page one.
Some of us, people that I've spoken to, do we want to have a license or a permit? What's the difference? Why it's the purpose? You know, I mean... I understand, again, that we probably just started bootlegging this from other people, but when I look at this, you know, if we're gonna have a license, are we gonna charge people, like, per chicken, or per home, or how is that gonna go? Do we know what the fee is for a license? Do we... I mean, is every little chicken gonna have a little license, or...
Should be, just a permit.
So that's what I'm thinking. If it's just a simple permit that, you know, so that Rachel and everybody know law enforcement knows, here's a permit, let's go check this line out. Versus a license and a fee, and...
I'm...
If that's what they're gonna do.
And then so, permit and then a fee for the permit?
You know, like some simple...
Two bucks, two bucks.
So page one, 25.2, last line, no person will keep buying chickens within the village, no person obtaining a license or a permit from the village pursuant to cost of said permit.
Application for the fee, that's it.
But then you have to refer to those applications.
Oh, there is an application that's... So we go to page two. Man, that person's seeking a... Huge, though.
Plus their permits on the front door. The person's seeking a permit under this checkbook, so they can still do a permit like we do the event permit. It's sort of same, it's an informational courtesy.
What, $10? I don't know. How much are ten, how much are permits anyway? No idea.
Well, a permit.
How much is a dollar price? Is it ten bucks?
Yeah.
They're allowed more chickens?
More chickens, $10.
Well, I don't think you should do... Per chicken, it needs to be per permit.
Yeah, because when a deer chicken dies.
That's right. That's right. Not like $10 for living... Okay, so doing the 25.3. I got a question here where it says, "Application shall include proof of ownership of the property." What if we have a renter that wants to have chickens, you know, we can't... Does that person need to get a note from the owner?
Read the best of it, says to be a principal owner.
Well, yeah, I know, I know, but I'm saying, what if someone's lived in their home for ten years, and they wanna get chickens, and now they gotta go ask the owner, and the owner says, "No."
They know before they move in, so, no pets. Future chicken qualifies as a pet. Your lady's gonna want the chickens.
Great, just putting it out there. Much of the other stuff is just scratching the village clerk or inserting the law enforcement people. I think that's all I really had, was just permission, license issued, and definitely no manslaughter. It says, "No manslaughter on the parcel outdoors." So they take their chickens into the house to kill them, or...
Gee, so cheap.
I guess as long as you do it in your house, you're... I guess as long as you do it in your house, you're cool, right?
Tell side.
Well, beyond fixing those things, I would make a motion to...
Approve chicken, only need a fee.
Ten dollars?
Ten dollars.
Chicken? Larry, what do you think?
Chicken permit.
I think this is, epitomizing government at work.
Permit for ten dollars.
Here's a term.
No, they say, it says...
Rachel, Rachel just said that some people charge up to fifty dollars. If we charge somebody fifty dollars to have chickens, no one will have chickens.
You won't make any change.
Oh, really?
Well, we can say a thousand dollars.
We'll allow a thousand dollars.
Well, I just don't think we're going to have a thousand people coming down here to get chicken permits, so...
Ten bucks.
Ten bucks, I think. I'll make, that'll make the motion for ten dollars or whatever we got in.
Then fine, because it says no more than four hens and no roosters. We don't get...
Rachel, you got all the corrections?
Yes.
Rachel, I do have some scribbles on the application slash permit, but I'll get these to you tomorrow or something and get them fixed up.
Okay.
So I will make the motion that we approve number five with the correction as amended that the law enforcement people do the stuff and charge ten bucks for a permit.
Slaughter inside, I'll be right.
Slaughter inside.
I'll get a vote.
Motion on the floor, we have a support. Motion on the floor, a support. So who's going to go tell the current people, "We have chickens to come get a permit"? Me? Her? Her.
Well, she just lost her job.
No support?
I'll support it. Come on, I'm sorry. You're going to die.
We have a motion and a support by Tyler. To accept the ordinance as amended. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
I think that we'll stink if we don't let people raise food on their, with four chickens. I mean, it's, four chickens make less poop than a dog. They don't, they don't know what the big deal about not having four chickens is. So, there you go, that's all we have.
I figured if Kansas City can have elk crabbers and dogs, we can do it.
Okay, I'll vote yes. What the heck? Four chickens? Yep, everybody has four chickens. They're not, they're not rooster running.
You're going to have five.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Yes.
No? Yes.
I got your vote.
Very.
Okay.
Ordinance number four eliminates the chickens in ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve number four.
Will we support?
Support.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Planning Commission had a public hearing with respect to changing zoning on M-88 between Gilbert and Bradford Street.
Valid, word.
Valid, everyone, thank you. We are not obligated by their action, but they did listen to the public, which was very orderly, and everybody seemed to have a chance, and then proceeded to deny the request to change the zone. They had to write a letter with the minutes of the meeting, a cover letter stating their actions, which they have done, and the attorney says, "We can do whatever we want to do from
Well, since they had an open meeting and the public themselves did not want it, then I would vote to not change the zoning.
Make a motion?
I make a motion that we do not change the zoning.
Will we support? They moved a support by Clark and Zollin Act. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, welcome. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. I want you to understand that that doesn't prevent from trying to come into the community someplace else. What that just says, we're not going to resolve that area.
All it does is eliminate village taxes on wherever they put it.
May or may not.
Me. They've got so much other land they could use, though, so they don't have.
They're going to put one here.
Oh, yeah, they will.
They'll just put it in the township and the village.
DDA has submitted a budget for us to approve, so they can spend money legally. We approved a budget of fourteen thousand five hundred. They have designated thirty-two hundred of that as salaries and capital improvements. They sign in Sage Park with two picnic tables down there, new dog in park signs, animal waste bags in pole, gate on the back fence of Sage Park. Those are what they've...
What's Sage Park?
Sage Park, the park between, between the insurance office and Bakel.
All of that. I never heard it called Sage.
I had the, whoever...
That's what it was called when they got the renovation. So can I make a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Any support?
Support.
Support up there. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Do we need a roll call on that one?
We're not spending, are we? Are we okay?
It's already budgeted.
It's a whole.
Fourteen thousand. Letter has accepted denied the planning commission recommendation on the veterans memorial. Again, we're in the same position as we were with changing the zoning, in that we are not obligated, so they have written the letter to say they denied the request of the VFW to have the lot next to the old, and they donated to the group, so is there any discussion?
We made this decision because there are other properties that we thought they might be able to use, including the lot down here, the township lot, or maybe the, by the chamber gazebo also, or maybe by the VFW.
I saw the VFW.
We also determined that we weren't really sure who was, who was asking for this. Was it the VFW? Was it the Amets? Was it, there was, hasn't been, it's been uncertain. So those were the reasons why. And also the possibility of using that corner lot maybe for village offices or something else someday, so that was the logic behind the decision.
Well, if they would put that there, who would bear the expenses of keeping it up?
They're asking us to do the maintenance on it.
I just do not see it go there.
Well, I think everyone is agreeing that a memorial isn't a bad idea, it's just the location seems to be a kicker right now.
Any other discussion? I'm really torn with this, just because most of these guys, Mr. Higginson particularly...
But it's the location, it's not putting it up, it's the location.
One of the thoughts of having it by the chamber gazebo, you know, or by the cabin and the gazebo back in there is that there would already be parking, there's already stuff there, like the gazebo or the chamber, thinking that maybe the veterans or whoever they are in the chamber, maybe they can help each other, was watching the properties or keeping things together, just sort of combining things into one place up there.
We're talking...
Property's already ready, yeah. Behind a big green spot there, I mean, it's already ready.
VFW is in dire straits. It won't be long, they probably will not exist as far as having the building that they have.
Right.
What, has it been thought about the cemetery?
Well, the, last September, someone came to the township regarding this, and the township approved, right on the other side of those tree lines there, there's a nice spot right next to the driveway. I think Sam is already ready to go, basically, it wouldn't need a lot of work, right near the driveway, so I recognize that they want to be downtown and be more visible, but that corner lot is just a tough situation.
Well, there's room on that lot for something besides that. I mean, they're only talking a very small area of dirt.
Mine was pretty big.
Mine was pretty big, they would propose that.
Pretty big.
There wouldn't be room really to do much else.
Wasn't it only like sixteen feet wide or something?
I don't remember the dimensions. This is a tough call. These guys fought for us to be able to stay here.
I just found out tonight who's ahead of that with the Amets, and they already have their board onboard, and I don't know how many who's aware of that, but I was talking to them tonight, and they'll be taking over the VFW. I know that the chamber cavern and that gazebo is on village property, you know, that would be another spot that hardly gets used, you know, if they wanted, you know, utilize that to, you know, in the town. But I did find out tonight, and I have wanted to know who's kind of ahead of us, because I didn't listen to them, but I found out tonight who's, they've already have the board, and it's, it's none of the VFW, it's the Amets.
The VFW boys are getting old. They won't be here for long.
I'm definitely in support of it, I just don't feel, go to the, aren't that corner lot?
Well, actually, what we're going to do is deny the recommendations, you're saying, not damn that. Put it here.
You don't know what we're saying.
Well, it's up to...
That's right, it's accept their recommendations.
The VFW is a recommendation thing.
The bank gave the, closed the property, but they assumed that we'd do something worthwhile starting in June. It's a pretty small lot.
It's an employer.
It's too small for a parking lot, and I don't think we have the support from any of us to put public bathrooms in. And I can't think of a better use anywhere than to, than to honor their vets. It'll cost us a little bit, and we'll be using some property that could have been used for something else possibly, but when you do anything, it costs something more, and I don't think it, we're wasting money or misusing public funds or properties when we dedicate them to our vets.
Isn't there room to put it on the front of the lot? You could put all kinds of restrooms on the night of the lot.
The lot is... There are restrooms associated.
I know, but eventually, I mean, if the village or somebody else wanted restroom, there would be room behind there. There's room enough on that lot for that and something else. How big is that lot?
Seventy-five by one hundred fifty.
Pretty good size of lot. But they only, what, they seem by eighteen... Would it fit in that open space?
In the open space? Then it'd be right downtown and everybody'd see it.
Sage. Sage Park.
The picnic table is something that's...
She's the one that said American.
I don't think that's big enough.
It's looking open, looking up, don't you?
Not for what they have in mind. I think they want something that would be prominent, and this lot would make it.
Everybody would like to see us do it, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, you know, it's a sacrifice on our part or a town's part, but not nearly what we've gotten from them. And at the rate they're dying, we'll soon not gain any more of our two vets. And it'd be a shame to not have some, some kind of a dedication to them.
I know the argument was out there, well, Baller has one, so we really don't need one, but the community and the country has probably some type of monument for that. It's a tough call, that's all.
Well, do we have to decide today?
Well, I've got a question, totally different than all this. Financially, where are they at? My concern is that they're going to start this, tear things up, and all of a sudden momentum's going to get lost, and we're going to have slagstone sitting there, a pile of earth, because it wasn't properly funded, and they're constantly trying to gather funding for this project. And that is my concern, that we're going to be looking at, you know, a half-started project that's slowly going to be evolving, and there's going to be weeds going into this pile of earth. I would like to see it in stages and say, okay, we've got this funded for stage one. We're going to put down the papers. Better not with me, you've got your papers. My concern, they didn't show us any funding, and while they're going out to sell bricks and all, that's a wonderful idea, you know, ideas don't put bricks in the ground and slag underneath it and a machine operator there to move her. That's the bottom line. And I'd like to see a more comprehensive financial plan.
I think that was part of the planning commission's concern as well. We haven't seen anything regarding money or, or anything. We just didn't feel like we could say yes when we didn't know what was going on. And I, I hear you, Bill, I mean, I totally am down with it, but we just don't have data to work with. I mean, I get right...
If we don't approve the use of the property, then that's the end of it. I mean, they're, they're not going to go any further.
So if they don't get that specific property, they're going to say, "We're not going to do it"? I mean...
Well, that's, that was, that was my impression from them.
So that's sold on that, that the whole thing's going to wither and die even though we've got three other places? They won't be able to carry any funding?
They haven't, they haven't, they didn't like the cemetery lot.
They didn't like in front of here?
They didn't like that.
And this is all kind of gated?
And I don't know all of the specifics of that, but I do know that they, they didn't like that.
And so they, so it's the chicken and the egg thing?
And I don't know if they've ever been proposed to them to use the other...
What about the chamber?
Well, that's been a hard to prove, there hasn't been one specific, you know, Mr. Higginson was in on it for a while, Kotwick, and then Mr. Morrison, we don't know who is the go-to or who's officially doing it, or where the money's coming from, or, we've seen the monument, it's awesome. I'm, it is, you know, so it's just not...
What if we approve their use, approve them to have the use, but they've got to show us that it has to be, that it can be paid for?
Yeah, under conditions of such, such and such.
Yeah.
What if we did that?
And it would be nice if this Amet group would come here and present it, because you've had, you know, this person and that person, and then, so you really don't have the answers.
They might go with a hold of her proposal with the want of bill versus what was previously presented and approved in the first place. It could be anything.
I would support a conditional use of it. If they meet X criteria, yes.
Why don't we just table it until, we don't have to get rid of it today anyway, why don't we just table it until this board comes to us?
We don't have to make a decision to any more.
And says, all right, this is what we're, this is how much money we got, this is how much we can get done in the first three months.
I think it should be tabled until we find out more about their financial situation.
I mean, I don't think you should shut them out, that's just me, which, you know, nobody's shutting them out, but, you know, I don't think they even know maybe some of their other options, but I think it would be nice, because after talking to this guy tonight, or, you know, this afternoon, I had a whole different outlook on this, you know? That was just me personally, and I said, "Why have you guys been to the village or, you know, or..."
They might take away the VFW home and put it right there.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're done every time you drive by the driveway, so we should... They're working with that every time they're driving the driveway, so we should probably talk to them before we make any decision.
Can we table it later, or do we have to, can I make a motion to table it until we get more info?
You're making that motion?
May I make a motion to table it?
Very moving, supportive, that we take it with you?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. We put it back on the agenda for July and see if we can dig up more from that. Uh, we got a letter from Judy Kethlowski, who was chair of the planning commission, and effective as of last Thursday through June fourth, she'll be resigning from the planning commission and DDA. This commission takes more time than I had to give in light of my responsibilities to the township, which of course is my priority. We all should accept a letter of resignation. Then moved by, I didn't get a...
Oh, support.
You got a support?
Bill, you made the motion.
You made the motion, all right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Nothing left on the agenda, I wrote, since I've been sitting here, old business, and we wanna drop the, the minimum bid of, for the car, forty-five hundred.
It's not enough, right? It's been on.
Yep. Let's have a motion to that.
I have a motion.
Remove the minimum bid.
Just remove the minimum bid entirely? Okay, then what I was gonna bump it, sorry. Anybody have a problem with that?
What, are you on sales price? What do you, a sales price and skip bidding and just sell it directly? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it, um...
He's stipulating the, the minimum bid is what I'm saying.
You know, you could say, I guess you could say the two thousand if you want, but, but I don't know. Or if, if you don't get any bids on that, then...
So we have five on it now, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And he, nobody probably even looked at it, right?
That I couldn't tell you, but nobody's responded.
But we didn't, we didn't put our best offer either, so...
So what if we try for sale for a month for four thousand? It's not going anywhere.
Well, they're gonna put you down there, or best offer, five thousand or best offer, forty-five hundred or best offer. You should bring us on if you'll bid.
And then we always have the option to accept or not accept it, the best offer's ten bucks and you're gonna pay.
Okay, so I got a motion.
Your number's forty-five hundred?
Forty-five hundred or best offer.
Yep.
Oh, I have a motion by Clark. With support by, by Chapman.
And what's the, uh, drop dead date or best offer? Somebody comes in today and says, I'll give you that, and that's the best offer that you've gotten so far? You're gonna sell it that day?
Right, prior to, prior to or next week? Motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Public comment? Yes or no?
I would, is there any way I could get Thursday Park's phone number? Lyle, do you have a cell number? I have...
Two, three, one, three, two, three, one, three, five, one, six, three, nine, four.
Okay. On the new brochures that come out, maybe?
Okay, I'm, I'm getting calls for Thursday Park and I refer him to the office, but I'm doing questions to ask, to wonder if there's permanent parking, I, you know, there's stuff that I can't, so I just, they wanted to talk to the park manager about, they've been here before, they have questions about sites and stuff. I don't know. Rachel, I just, I give them that number, I don't know if they're calling you, or... You get a lot of calls, probably do. I give them six, forty-three and, thank you, thank you.
Maybe we can put Lyle's phone number on the Chamber website. Right, then we'll have everybody calling you all the time.
Cuts into my fishing, man, I turn it off.
There you go.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Need to watch, do a jury? All to my Chapman.
Support.
Support, I, Zaline. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming. Why you have to cook the chickens?
So, every question on the, on Saturday, oh, yeah. We've got down here, the sand, the sand, the, 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 the sidewalks, up in the...